We're gonna ask Councilwoman Helen Harris when she gives us our prayer.
Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon, oh God. Just wanna thank you, Lord, for another day. Thank you for your goodness and all your mercy, oh God. Lord, you've been so good to us. You've been so good to this city, oh God. And, Lord, we just wanna thank you for all you're doing, what all you're gonna do, and what you're gonna continue to do. We thank you, oh God. And let us have sweet communication among each other, oh God. Cover us with your blood, oh God. Wrap us in your love, oh God. Tighten us up while we too loose, Lord, and loosen us up while we too tight. And, Lord, we give you glory this afternoon, and we bless your name in this place, oh God. And, Lord, let your spirit be made known in here, oh God. Lord, let that love run from heart to heart and breast to breast, oh God. Lord, let us have sweet communication, oh God. Good understanding, oh God. Lord, we lift you up this evening, oh God. We delight ourselves in you this evening, oh God. We commit our ways to yours this evening, oh God. And we trust in you, oh God. Teach us how to rest in you, God. Teach us how to seek you tomorrow, God. And, Lord, we wanna thank you and give you more glory, hallelujah, 'cause glory and honor belongs to you. Continue to wrap us in your love. Continue to cover us with your blood. Continue to let your spirit flow among us, oh God, each and every one. Let us touch each other with love, oh God. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
We're asking Councilmember Paul, you may...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We good?
Yes, sir. Mayor Marco McClinton.
Present.
City Attorney Michael Stevenson.
Here.
City of Treasurer Frank Martin.
Here.
Counselor Tracy Cat. Counselor Wayne Crew.
Here.
Counselor Helen Harris. Counselor James Holt.
Here.
Counselor Melanie Hutchinson.
Here.
Counselor Willis Monday.
Here.
Counselor Lorraine Mohammed.
Present.
Counselor David Murray.
Here.
Counselor James Pulliam.
Here.
And Counselor Willis.
Here. I hear it from Councilman Cat. He's with his wife. And there, I asked for our prayer. That's the recovery. We have bid open in our park recreation installation of park missions on the table for the city. Director Park, if you wanna speak on that.
Greeting councilors, members and mayor. It's pretty straightforward. What it is is just the benches for all of our parks and tables for all of our parks, including Tilton Rogers except the ones, I believe it's Horton and Grimsley, who, you know, got new benches and tables when we redid those through a grant process about three or four years ago. But we hadn't replaced those since I've, you know, been here. And I know we got some plans to redo some stuff in the park. But we needed those because of Tilton Rogers. You know, we rent those out every weekend. And I think this weekend, even the family transitions, they have a big weekend plan out there. So it's just some stuff that's much needed and do it. And like I said, our great financial director Frank Martin has really, you know, steered some earmarks, some money to do some park development for stuff like this, and that's just part of it. And just like I said, have anybody got any questions about it?
Are the benches, are there gonna be wrought iron or are they gonna...
Yes, yes. They'll be, they'll be the, what you call the expanded metal ones because, you know, the wood ones over the years, they just don't last. And this is more of an investment. And they, the other thing, Councilman Crew, they'll be bolted and anchored down to the concrete 'cause that's part of the biggest problem of them, getting moved and dragged. And some of them disappear sometimes.
Yeah, they do. A good deal.
If there's no further questions, I'm gonna ask a motion in a second to bring them back.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, guys.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? Well, here now.
Make a motion, but see it.
I'll pay by. Oppose.
This is the second reading of an ordinance which will need an amendment probably after the third reading. This authorizing ordinance of the City of West Memphis for the municipal buildings project.
I get a motion and second.
So move.
Spend the room.
Second.
This authorizing ordinance of the City of West Memphis for the municipal buildings project. Yeah, there were, there need to be some amendments made. And so I would ask that it be amended to reflect the meetings that we had, which changed the interest rate and the total amount, what is not to exceed, as well as there were some changes in paragraph 11 with regard to us having an account, the city having an established account for this purpose. And I think there were some mentions of taxes throughout which were deleted.
I'll make a motion, we accept the recommendation.
Second.
I'll pay by.
Yeah.
Oppose. I get a motion.
So move.
Second.
In discussion. Here now.
Call the roll call.
I can't understand. Yeah, we read my title, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, we'd already done it.
Read once.
Yeah. Last time.
Roll call vote. Counselor Cat. Counselor Crew.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Holt.
Here. Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Both.
Yes.
Counselor Monday.
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed.
Yes.
Counselor Murray.
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam.
Yes.
And Counselor Willis.
Yes.
The motion, Senator. The city clerk, will you give the ordinance a number?
That ordinance number will be two, five, two, one.
Mr. Pulliam?
Make a motion, we table O two. And...
So move.
All the way by. Oppose. O two is table now.
Add the new O two that was handed out in the meeting to the, to the agenda. With the...
It's gonna be two, five, two, two.
Two, five, two.
Let me go back. That ordinance number.
Two, five, two, two.
Open. Two, five, two, two.
We're correcting it to two, two.
Yes, two, five, two, two. I got a motion in a second to add the new O two on. All the way by.
Yeah.
Oppose. Alright. Now, Mr. Pulliam.
Make a motion, read it highly only.
O two.
Yeah, the new O two.
The new O two.
Yes, a lot.
I get a second.
Second.
All the way by. Oppose.
Let me see that. Alright, this is first reading of O two. An ordinance granting an extension of the moratorium on the issuance of any new certificates of occupancy for used automobile-related businesses, including auto repair, garages, automobile truck sales, used automobile wrecking, salvage or junkyards, automobile painting or body rebuilding shop, auto wrecker services, boats/marine rental repair or sales used, and motorcycle sales and service used, and other like facilities in the City of West Memphis until December 20, 2019, making various findings and provisions related to the subject, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I pull the suspend the rule. We're telling the second reason.
So move.
Second.
All the way by.
Yeah.
Oppose.
Second reading is an ordinance granting an extension of the moratorium on the issuance of any new certificates of occupancy for used automobile-related businesses, including auto repair garages, automobile/truck sales used, automobile wrecking, salvage or junkyards, automobile painting or body rebuilding shop, auto wrecker services, boat/marine rental repair or sales used, and motorcycle sales and service used, and other like facilities in the City of West Memphis until December 20, 2019, making various findings and provisions related to the subject, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I'll get the motion and say in the first.
So move. Second.
All the way by.
Yeah.
Just on the third reading.
Third reading is an ordinance granting an extension of the moratorium on the issuance of any new certificates of occupancy for used automobile-related businesses, including auto repair garages, automobile/truck sales used, automobile wrecking, salvage or junkyards, automobile painting or body rebuilding shop, auto wrecker services, boat/marine rental repair or sales used, and motorcycle sales and service used, and other like facilities in the City of West Memphis until December 20, 2019, making various findings and provisions related to the subject, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I get a motion in a second.
So move.
In discussion.
I don't like for him to just clear it up for the public, for they could understand what you really mean.
Well, the, we are making amendments or changes to the zoning ordinance, which has been discussed for a period of time with regard to these types of businesses. And they have to have special permitted uses. The moratorium that we had that was for a year ends on October the 20th. So the new law, if it's passed, wouldn't be effective, I guess it was passed, wouldn't be effective until 30 days thereafter. So we don't want there to be a gap in between. So that's why we're asking for it to be passed on the emergency clause.
All the way in for the discussion. Here now. All the way by. Oppose. Will you give me a number for O two?
O two will be two, five, two, three.
And we're gonna go back up to O one.
We got the emergency clause.
No. I make a motion, we add emergency clause, section four.
In a second.
Second.
All the way by. Now then, go back up to O one.
Okay. O one is an ordinance to amend the West Memphis zoning ordinance, 1988, as amended. Article three, section two B, permitted uses; section two point one B, permitted uses; article ten, section two, definitions; and appendix A, table of permitted uses.
I pull the suspend the rules. We're telling the second reason.
So move.
Second.
All the way by. Oppose.
An ordinance to amend the West Memphis zoning ordinance, 1988, as amended. Article three, section two B, permitted uses; section two point one B, permitted uses; article ten, section two, definitions; and appendix A, table of permitted uses.
I pull the suspend the rules. We're telling this third reading.
So move.
Second.
All the way by.
Yeah.
Oppose.
An ordinance to amend the West Memphis zoning ordinance, 1988, as amended. Article three, section two B, permitted uses; section two point one B, permitted uses; article ten, section two, definitions; and appendix A, table of permitted uses.
I get a motion in a second.
So move.
In the discussion.
Has the public been notified of all of this? I mean, is this something that is really clear cut right now? I know in times past, we passed things of this nature. And after the fact, we have a lot of public coming and asking, why was this done? And they were not aware of anything of that nature.
We had a public hearing at the last meeting.
Yeah, I remember that.
And I guess there was one person, I think, that showed up. And he, his issue was mainly about trying to get his business going, I think, more than anything else. So, I mean, that's what we're supposed to do, is hold a public meeting. So as far as how it's been communicated, I can't really speak to that.
Right, that's my only concern, is how it has been communicated. Because in times past, we've done, passed these type ordinances or rules. And after the fact, the public is coming, not knowing anything. And how, I don't know how it was publicized for the public to be at that last hearing. Maybe not very well, because nobody was here.
I don't know for sure, but I think it was in the evening times.
I don't get it. I don't take the paper.
Well, that's what we're required to publish in.
I know. I was just asking, because we've had these things come up before. Don't mean any harm, I just don't take it.
I would hope there wouldn't be any problem with it, but I'm sure there will be some questions. There always are.
But I wanted to bring that out, just in case there are questions. And we've discussed it here today for the second time. And we've given the public a chance to come forth with any complaints or concerns they may have.
Any further discussion? All the way by. Oppose. The city clerk, will you give that a number, O one?
O one will be two, five, two, four.
Down to permission request, I need permission to distribute council, councilmember Helen Harris' charity funds to 550, 59 to Wonder City Boys and Girls Club, and 550, 60 to L. L. Jackson Activity Center.
So move.
All the way by. Oppose. Permission request to accept the 2020 insurance plan.
So move.
About the pre-count.
Yeah.
I get a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I mean, Mr. Martin, you can kinda, you know, just talk about it briefly, if you don't mind.
Go back over.
Yeah, just, you know, just...
Basically, it's the same plan that we, that we had this year. The insurance committee has, has decided that they will meet earlier next year to look at our, our costs and, and our claims, and probably go out and put them out for bids. Because every three years is a good time to do that. The current plan, employee health cost is $50 a month. That will go to $52 a month. The current family, family plan is $420 a month. That will go to $430. The dental cost to, sent to employees remains free. It's 1988 for the retirees. The family dental cost goes from $48.82 to $50.78. And there's still no charge on the Signal Life Insurance that the city furnishes for employee. And the city share of the benefit cost will go from $635 per month per employee to $650 per month per employee.
Any further discussion?
Frank, Mr. Martin, I know that we're gonna have some toolbox sessions, right, with some of our city employees to...
Yes.
Okay.
Already talked about that.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Here now, all the way by. Oppose. Committee reports. Councilman Pulliam, you tell it.
I passed it out. Everyone have the justice report, and also AMP as well. Both.
Public member wanna hear the...
Well, I'll take it next time.
Airport, Mr. Crew.
Yeah, we met this morning. We had a quorum this morning. And basically, the airport right now is in fairly good shape. They have no outstanding debt. They seem to be doing very well. Can I, can I go on down to appointments, or can I, because that was part of our conversation today. Do I now?
I mean, yeah.
Okay. The airport commission of the members that were present wanted to appoint another member to take Clarence Davis's slot out at the, on the commission because that slot's been open now for about a year and a half. And they wanted to appoint Donnie Underwood at, it's good, it used to be Community Bank, now it's Premier Bank. And every councilperson's got a resume for Donnie in their packet. So we will be voting on that next week, or next meeting. Excuse me. That's my report.
Councilman Monday, no police?
No, I, but do, do, do Chief wanna bring anything to us?
No.
Nope.
Councilman Holt, I think we discussed...
Parks.
Councilman Hutchinson, personnel.
Yes, Mayor. We, the Personnel Committee met on October the 5th. The agenda covered proposing sick and vacation time for new employees after 90 days. The committee will have the proposal prepared for the entire City Council in November. And we'll give that to the council for their consideration. The HR, Finance, and Utilities Departments are working on the Kronos Timekeeping System. This is the new system that has been approved. It's been set to begin in 2020. And then lastly, the Health Fair, October 31st, from 11:00 to 2:00. Flu shots will be administered. The Health Fair will be given, I'm sorry, the Health Fair will be at Eugene Woods Civic Center again, October 31st, from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. And that concludes my report.
Councilwoman Mohammed, did you all have public works after the...
No, we're not gonna have it. It has been canceled. I sent a notice out that we will not be having it. Everything was cleared up already.
Councilman Willis, I need your support for the fourth.
Yes, sir. Wednesday, October the 9th, the chamber met. Vice President Jack Paul Jr. called the meeting to order. The chamber had two new members added since last meeting. Now, October the 19th is the Great State Cook-Off. It starts at 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., which will be here at the Civic Center on the parking lot. Like to invite everybody to come out for that. Also, October 21st, networking luncheon is 12:00 noon at ASU Mid-South Hospitality Center. October the 25th is Stoodland's Charity Golf Tournament at Marion Golf Club, and that starts at 9:00 a.m. in the morning. October 29th, Arkansas State Chamber door-to-door luncheon at Southland Casino is at 11:30 a.m. And then on October the 31st, ASU Mid-South Halloween Bash starting at 4:30 p.m. I got to assume that's gotta be in, I don't know which buildings. But it's a, out, should be at the...
It's, it's out at the ASU Mid-South.
Okay. But, Meadow Brooks Halloween Spook Taker starts at 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. on October 31st also. Happy fall, everyone.
Counsel, Councilperson Willis, did you mention the Manufacturing Day, October 24th?
No, sir. Sure did.
There's gonna be a Manufacturing Day out at ASU Mid-South on the 24th. And all the local industries are invited to come by. And I think they've got quite a few people signed up.
I knew that. Sounds like a good day.
Yeah.
I, I need to, I wanna make a recommendation from the Budget Committee while, while we're here. The permission, we need, I'd like to ask for permission to add to the agenda for the meeting of the West Memphis City Council today, while we're here. First, a resolution to confirm the payment of engineering and construction costs associated with the West Memphis Public Library. Number two is permission to pay $109,741.15 to Barnes &amp; Bauer. This is the first draw on the West Memphis Library project. I'd like to ask for permission for the mayor to sign agreements to renew our insurance programs with ATNA, Amp First, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Delta Dental, and Signal Life Insurance. And I'd like to ask for permission for the mayor to fill the vacancy. The victim advocacy director funded, but not filled in the West Memphis Police Department budget with a new position of Community Resources Director with a salary of $53,000 per year.
I get a second.
Second.
All the way by. Said, so, I need a motion in a second. He's added to the agenda. Can I get a motion in a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
In discussion. Here now, all the way by. Oppose. Alright, passes.
You raise your hands.
Okay. And, Mr. Pulliam.
I make a motion, we read the resolution by title only. He's involved.
Second.
All the way by. Oppose.
A resolution to confirm the payment of engineering and construction expenses associated with the project designated as the West Memphis Public Library and for other purposes.
Make a motion, we accept.
Second.
In discussion. Here now, all the way by. The city clerk, will you give the resolution a number?
That resolution number will be 2210.
Alright, appointment. We got one resume on Mr. Don Underwood. And Councilman Crew pretty much gave us his resume. And normal practice, what we do, all the council people get their resume at this meeting, and then at the next meeting, they'll vote to approve.
Mayor, if I may, real quickly, going back to the Health, the Health Fair, the flu shots, Mr. Crew, they asked, would that be...
Would it be free of charge?
Would it be free of charge? I will find out that information. It always has been, okay. Because Janice has been holding it down for me. Obviously, I'm reading my notes based on what they gave. But so far as we know, it has been?
Yes, sir, it's all.
Yeah, it always is.
Okay, great. Alright, well then, that's, that's a good thing. We just wanted to make sure we announced that as well.
We got a free announcement. While Jim Jackson's coming to talk about the State Cook-Off, I'm gonna ask Councilman Crew if he can talk about the families in transition.
Families in transition. I was having an event this weekend out at Tilton Rogers. It starts at 10:00 a.m. And it runs till 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon. It has to do with abuse within the families and, or any kind of abuse. And it also has to do with trafficking, human trafficking. And it's basically some of the professional people that work for our city and our community, our men are gonna be wearing lady shoes. And the name of it is Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. There's gonna be events out there. There's gonna be where you can get, grab something to eat, or you can buy raffle tickets and win different gifts and stuff. And it's a fundraiser, is what it is, for families in transition. And we're hoping to see quite a few people out there. We've got quite a few that have already filled out application, not an application, but hit your fees, so we know that there're gonna be quite a few people out there. So Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00, Tilton Rogers. If you wanna see James Holt wearing some women's shoes, come on out there.
Speaking of James Holt, when we were in business, actually, Families in Transition, we actually used a couple of the ladies that had been abused. And they're working in the community now with, with good salaries. So we hit, we took them there to our place and made some good citizens out of them.
And when you get through wearing those lady shoes...
Come on over to the State Cook-Off Mr. Willis was talking about over at the Civic Center. It's the, music starts at noon. The event goes from noon to 6:00. As of Tuesday, we met with the two representatives from the State Cookers Association. We had 40 teams registered. And he says there's a lot of folks who will wait to the last minute this week, even walk up. And the fee is $150 to enter the state judging competition for it to be judged. And it's the same as if you walk up or if you pre-register. And so we're expecting at least 50 teams, I hope, I hope more than that. That'd be a nice crowd over there. I've got some good music lined up. We also are gonna have People's Choice. So for $5, you can be a judge yourself of each team who is entered into the People's Choice Division. And so I think it's gonna be a good time. Hope everybody comes out. Appreciate everybody's help. A lot of folks coming over to help out. And so, yeah, once you go out to the college or to Tilton Rogers, you wanna do something else on Saturday afternoon, come over. We're gonna have the Auburn-Alabama, Auburn-Arkansas game on, on TV over there. And...
I'm sorry, what, what game?
I said the Arkansas Razorbacks and Auburn Tigers, is what I said. We'll have a big screen over there. And so I think it's gonna be a good time. Y'all come out. And I think it'll at least smell good over there. I know it'll sound good, too. sound good, too.
I, I have a question for Councilor, uh, Crone. For the public, where will you find a, um, size shoe for a man who wears a fifteen or sixteen?
That is a very good question.
I'm not even mine. I'm gonna give you mine.
You have women's shoes.
Of, of course. Well, there's go, Family in Transition, uh, they're gonna have some shoes out there for somebody, but I had on a pair, I'm gonna tell you something, I had on a pair of four-inch heels just for a, a, uh, video, yeah, four inches, and I could not hardly stand up in those heels, and I, I was like, I'm ready to take these off, we did a video and I took them straight off. But, uh, they're gonna have some shoes out there, but I don't, I, it's a good question, 'cause men's shoes and women's shoes are just not, like, a, a men's ten would be like a, a women's twelve, you know? I don't know any women that's got a size twelve feet.
You actually had heels?
I did, I was, you see the commercial, I didn't wear heels.
So a man's ten?
They were sparkly heels. Real shiny.
Well, uh, I got two quick announcements. The first one is, uh, I'd like to thank everyone that was a part of the groundbreaking, uh, I was over at the U L A meeting today, had a different mayor's over there and different other representatives, and they were talking about West Memphis, and West Memphis is a hot topic, and, uh, one, uh, mayor, I guess he tried to be a little smart, kinda hate on our progress and success that we had, and thanks to you guys, you all gave me ammunition to be able to address him, and when we got through, the young man said, well, I'm getting ready to move to, uh, California, but we consider a thing about coming back to West Memphis, so, thank you all for the support. Also, I was, I'm gonna do something, uh, this Monday, but I feel that, I, talking to Councilwoman Mohammed, I think I'm gonna do it today, I'd like to announce, uh, a young man, I've been knowing him for a long time, very good friend, been very supportive of me, and I think he's gonna do a great job as well, as the young lady as well, for our Community Resource Outreach Department, I'd like to officially, since you all have made the change, officially announce, Mr. Steve Jones is our new Community Resource Director. And for our new Community Outreach Director, Ms. Tawana Bailey. Last thing we have on the agenda right now is, um, citizen requests, so I'm gonna ask Mr. Lois Willis to come forward, Hope of the Delta. You all, she may know somebody up there.
Can I?
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor McClendon, for allowing me to come here,
to take a, a few minutes of your time. I'm not a speaker, so bear with me, but, um, there is a big need here in Crittenden County. Um, I don't know if y'all know it or not, Crittenden County is number three in the state of Arkansas for the highest abortion rates. That's sad. You know, our, our, our kids deserve better. We need to be trying to mentor our children and teach them that there's other options besides abortion. So what Hope Delta for, Hope of the Delta is all about is, it's a facility that's gonna be opening up here in January, and it's gonna provide young women and men an opportunity to come in, and these young mothers to be able to have an ultrasound, free of charge, before they make that ultimate decision, which will be their decision, we're just strictly, it's a ministry, this is a ministry, and we're just strictly there to love these young girls and the fathers, because we want the fathers to come with them, too. It's not just strictly for the women. These girls didn't get in trouble by themselves, so I think that it should be that the young men know that, hey, I've got a girl, I've got a young girl pregnant, what do I do? We want them to come in together, and we wanna be able to try to save these babies' lives. That's what Hope of the Delta is all about, is stopping abortions, um, the abortion rates, believe it or not, are extremely high for African-American, and that's sad. It is extremely sad, but, uh, what this ministry is, is, um, is to serve Christ by empowering men and women to choose a spiritual life for themselves, a physical life for their babies, and an abundant life for their families. Um, this facility is strictly, uh, funded on strictly, uh, donations, so what, and I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you, Deborah apologizes that she couldn't be here, but she has a, a grandson who's celebrating eighteen years, so that's pretty big, so she had to celebrate the birthday with him. But, um, getting back to this, everything that happens with Hope of the Delta is strictly on a donations basis. We had, um, the banquet Tuesday night was at Wyatt's Cafe, and we were really, really excited, 'cause it was a packed house. Some of y'all that, that may have, uh, been invited, you missed a really good time, but we're really thankful that so many came out, and that was just to get the fundraising started so that we can raise the money that needs to be, um, that, that we need to have in place in order to get the facility opened up in January, and that's a little over fifty thousand dollars. So what I'm here for is, if I can get, we, we're trying to get people involved, get your churches involved, um, we, fundraisers, like, they do a bottle fundraiser thing where you take baby bottles and you just put money in it, um, like, uh, throw your coin in it, you know, at the end of the day, guys, when you pull that change out of your pocket, we'll get a baby bottle and just pour that, pour that coin in that baby bottle, and we'll come around and we'll collect those bottles. Um, we like to have, um, fundraisers at churches where they'll give baby showers, just strictly for Hope of the Delta, because we're gonna have a store inside, so these young mothers can come in that have chosen to keep their babies, they'll be able to come in and buy some things for their newborn, and, um, real inexpensive, but, you know, a new baby needs, needs new clothing, and so we just wanna be able to love these children, love these young men and women, um, it's strictly, um, it's not just for, um, helping the girls to keep from having abortions, um, it's gonna be a pregnancy testing clinic, it's gonna be, uh, to verify if that young woman, young girl is or isn't pregnant, uh, it also is gonna get, give, uh, opportunities to walk in to see if a young, somebody has an S T D. that they wanna be tested for, um, it's to also love them post-abortion recovery. A lot of girls, a lot of women, believe it or not, they suffer after an abortion, they have to carry this guilt with them for the rest of their lives, but we're there to love them and let them know that, that there's a, there's a mighty God that, that forgives us, and that he will forgive them so that they don't have to carry that guilt with them, and, and it's also, um, it's a, uh, sexual abuse recovery program, too, to help women who have been sexually abused. So what we're hoping for is, um, we wanna give, uh, the community a chance to jump on board with us, to help, it's volunteer, if you wanna be a part of volunteering and helping, uh, to work with these young mothers that are gonna be walking in, prayer partners, and, you know, we all, we all need that, and I, I don't believe that babies are a mistake. I believe what happens is these young girls and young boys make bad decisions, but our God says, I knew you before you were even in your mother's womb, so I know that, that if we can get to these young girls and these young men, that we hopefully can prevent them from crossing the river and going to Planned Parenthood, so I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Is there any more announcements? If none, I can motion. James Hope, you can get to the meal. All pay by. Opposed.